This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, we'll get started with consideration of the evening's agenda. If we don't have any suggested amendments, we will move on to item number one.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to request a short executive session later on in the meeting considering the appointment of an interim city manager during the search process. Maybe, maybe after item seven? No, I'm sorry. Yeah, after item seven, after item eight. There it is.
He's on his way, I think, from what I understand. Well, you're, so your, the policy, if you want to call that the resolution that we adopted basically said on an executive session item, you could approve that, you know, motion second and a simple majority for an executive session item.
Second.
So the motion is by Mr. Malat, second by Mr. Adams. Okay, just making sure. We got that.
Scott?
Yes.
Shriver? Or, excuse me, went backwards, Adams. Bishop? Malat?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
And that's after item eight. Okay.
A B.
We'll move on to item one, request your comments from the public. There being none, we'll move on to item two, consent agenda items. If anyone in the council would like any items removed from consent agenda, please let us know, otherwise we'll just go ahead and make the motion to move through those together.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
The motion is second, hold the clerk please.
Scott?
Yeah.
Adams?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Malat?
Yeah.
Shriver?
Yes.
Item three, consider resolution twenty-three, twenty-two, thirty-four related to amendments to the city's employee handbook.
I think Zach's gonna cover this for us, but questions, I'll be prepared.
Madam Mayor, members of council, this item is related to potential edits to the city's employee handbook related to the addition of a recognized city holiday. Per our employee handbook, as it's written now, any formal additions of a holiday would be added to the handbook via a resolution reviewed and approved by the governing body. In this case, the holiday being recommended being added to the calendar effective this year would be the Juneteenth, June nineteenth holiday. City currently recognizes the holidays that are noted in the agenda memo, so that's New Year's Day, Martin Luther King Day, President's Day, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving, and the day after Thanksgiving, as well as Christmas Day. The June nineteenth is recognized as an official federal holiday via federal action in 2021. Both Bonner Springs and Wyandotte County and KCK added it to their official employee list of recognized holidays last year, so we would be, we're kind of the last one in Wyandotte County who's not added this to our employee handbook as a recognized holiday. And so that's, that's the action we're taking to the, to the body now to make that change. If you have any questions related to that, you're here to answer those.
Zach, is that on the actual day or is that on Mondays?
It's on June nineteenth, so, cause similar to any of the other holidays that fall on like a Sunday, it would be, or a weekend, then it would either be recognized on that Friday or that Monday. So June nineteenth would be the recognized holiday.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion, we adopt resolution twenty-two, thirty-four, adding the Juneteenth into our holiday, list of holidays.
Second.
And just a quick reminder, this is an action of the governing body too, so I will have the mayor cast her vote as well. Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
And, or K R? I'm sorry?
Yes.
Okay, there, here I say.
Item number four, consider twenty-two financial statement and report the city's independence, public announcements.
Our auditor did have a previous meeting that they were coming back, coming from, so they, they did note that they might be a little bit late, so I don't know if we, if you wanted to go in and...
I'd probably just recommend, we can come back to that item, just, I mean, they really need to be here, I mean, it's your auditor, right? It's their audit presentation to view, so we could, we could tell you all this stuff, but it's really...
It's all great, just, it's good.
Go to the next item and...
We're ready to move on then to conduct a discussion regarding renewal of the half cent sales tax, special sales tax.
Are we working here? Great. So, this is really just a kind of an introduction to the item, talking about the half cent sales tax. As you know, we've, we've brought this up a few times as the current sales tax is nearing its expiration. I know it's, you know, a year and a half out, it sounds like a long time, but that's not always how it goes. So, just some history, we basically, in early 2014, there was a citizen, the city council created this task force to look at the implementation of the special sales tax and for what purposes. So, there's really two types of sales taxes that, really, I want to say three types of sales taxes. You have general sales taxes, and so a city can adopt a general sales tax up to two percent. Generally, one percent is pretty typical. You can opt special sales taxes. Those two can be up to two percent. They are limited in the sense that they have a ten-year sunset. So a general sales tax has no sunset on it. Special sales taxes have sunsets on them. And then the third one would be a CID or Community Improvement District Sales Tax. So those are the three general types of sales taxes. You may recall that we had gone through a couple of elections prior to this about sales tax and tried different, different wording and, and then again, this task force was formed. It was placed on the August twenty-fifth, fifteenth ballot, as shown here, and it had overwhelming approval. And as I noted, it actually sunsets in December thirty-first of 2024. Collections continue for about sixty days after that because they, they start about sixty days after. So even though we approved the half cent sales tax in August, it's the, you have to go ninety days, at least ninety days after the sales tax. So that has to be a full quarter, and that's mainly to notify all the vendors that it's coming. So we did it in August, it became effective January one of 2015, and the first payments were received, I believe, in March of 2015, because of the cycle. Basically, we, it was around three general areas, obviously roads predominantly. We made it wide road, street, sidewalk, so everything around roads, storm sewers. The second area was really around parks and recreation facilities, and the third area was around the fire EMS department. What I would note on the first, number one and number three, those were really around those material items and did not include any acquisition ability for facilities or things of that nature. None of them talked to staffing, so, right, so we can't pay for staffing out, sales tax was never the intent, nor would it be really proposed. It could be, but, but generally, that's not been the purpose of it. Just to give an idea, I mean, I, I think it's fair to say it's been very successful, and we'll look at that in a minute. But, you know, oftentimes, it's like, well, we always start comparing to mill levies, that's kind of our, oftentimes, our measurement. So had we not had this, and we would have still needed all those fire trucks, and we would have needed those parks improvements and cemetery improvements. And we all know we want street improvements done. So if we had not had the sales tax, basically what this chart tells you, for the same dollars spent, we were anywhere from basically a low in 2020 of 2.6 mils to as much as 8.4 mils in, in 2019. So if you took it on average, the sales tax is probably covering five to six mils worth of expenditures every single year. So if you didn't have it, and you came to us and said, we still want to do this many roads, and we want to buy this equipment, and we want to do these things, we would be coming to you and saying, well, then we need to adjust our mill levy by six mils on average to pay for these things. So it's been very successful in that sense. And again, I think, as we all know, a lot of our sales taxes are probably passed through, that is, people that are stopping and buying items. They may, they may be buying, they may be local people buying things that are delivered. But again, if you go to Nebraska Furniture Mart, pick it up up there, that's not sales tax that's captured here, even though you may buy your piece of furniture and bring it back. So it's hard to say how much of it is non-resident versus resident, but most of the studies would show you that probably two out of three are non-residents or something of that effect, some, somewhere around that. So it's, it's a very effective mechanism to help those that don't reside here paying property taxes to pay for those things. Cause that fire truck doesn't know when there's a car accident out there, right? Most of those are not necessarily residents that we go to or the police or...
Nice, nice.
Put that in absolute... Sorry about that.
So what have we paid for with this? A lot of things, especially in the fire department, right? Large capital items. Again, I think when I came here, you know, our two fire trucks were a couple of nineteen-eighty-nine fire trucks. And then we had the, I think it was the, the twenty-eleven lemon that we called it, cause it, it, it didn't run as much as it did run. And so we pretty well have done a complete replacement and enhancement of our fire fleet, right? So the pumper, the aerial, the, the multi-purpose truck, often gets referred to as the brush truck, but really it's a multi-purpose vehicle. And now our newest of our EMS units that we've bought with. So a lot of, a, a lot of dollars spent there. I will say, we, because of the aerial truck or the Quint, you know, we still have about $400,000 that'll have to be paid between twenty-five and twenty-eight. So if the sales tax is not in place, then we'll be paying for those leases in some other way. Cause I don't expect that we'll return the vehicle back to, to the borrower. I would hope not. And of course, you remember, we've bought some other specialty items, you know, cardiac monitors may not sound like a lot, but I think they're fifty, sixty thousand dollars up top, if I remember right. So how much? Forty-nine thousand. So that, those are big ticket items for us, right? And so, and we've used it to help on some of our matching grants and some other smaller equipment. Streets, you know, we've spent well over a half million dollars on streets. I know we often hear, when are you gonna do my street, or why haven't we done any streets? We've done a lot of streets, and these are not, these are not streets that have been capital in the sense of bond project. These are the ones like a hundredth street, the subdivisions, the, the seal coats, the Swartz Road that we did recently. So, you know, you're spending a hundred plus thousand a year out of, out of a fund for this. And then parks, you know, historically, we have not funded our parks as well as we should. And so this fund has helped us to do things that we haven't had in the past, you know, the, the disc golf. And as you saw recently, we had, I think, twelve young people sign up for the, for that disc tournament. It may not be a big number, but people truly appreciate it. The basketball courts getting lots of use. Of course, the trails, I remember when we, when we started in one of the roads and we weren't gonna put sidewalks in, and, and a citizen came and said, well, we should put sidewalks in, and like, well, okay, will anybody use it? And of course, they used it, and then after that, put a little bit of trail in, it's like, well, why don't you build more trails? And now we have several miles of trails and, and people want more, and they're, they're a great asset. So, you know, we, we kind of see what, what are we, what are we coming up against? Again, I think the, the goal is that, if possible, to get this on this November ballot. I think I told you, I think, I think in September, we have to have that language to the election office. If we want it on the November ballot, I'd have to double check that. So we want to start raising awareness that this is coming up. We collectively, as the council, want to look at, do we want to open up some of that language? So, you know, do we want to consider, for example, right now, police department, as you know, is not within the sales tax. You know, should it be part of the sales tax? You know, do we want to have that discussion? We know we're talking about facilities, do we want to add those? And that doesn't necessarily mean we're gonna go spend the money on any one of those items. We, we kept the sales tax such that we don't say a third's gonna be used here, a third's gonna be here, and a third here. We've said, we're gonna have this dollar amount, and this body collectively, as the representatives, will decide what are the best ways to spend that money. We're looking at, you know, about four hundred and forty thousand in this year coming up. Obviously, trying to grow the sales tax base will help grow that, that, that fund. But we've probably been in the average a little under four hundred thousand a year over the ten years. So you could spend all four hundred thousand really quickly on a street, or you could spend, you know, you, you could buy a fire truck and spend that, you know, make a down payment, still owe money. So it is a very nice fund, but there's probably more needs than there will be dollars in there. So we've always kept it as an open, you know, kind of an open fund in the sense of letting the elected body kind of decide what those priorities are. I mean, you may say, well, we want to spend at least a hundred thousand every year on streets, but some years, we may say, well, we've got this project, we need to spend two hundred and fifty thousand. But I don't have to buy a new fire truck this year, it's not gonna get bought for two more years. So obviously, once we buy them, you know, we are making payments out on those things. So I think right now, the only thing that's outstanding is the Quint, and then of course, the, the new ambulance. But I think we've already made a couple of years' payments out on that one already, so... Twenty-twenty-five is in the path, so, you know, we're ma, we've been making payments on it since we did the loan. We just didn't know it was gonna take so long to get the unit, but the money sits in the bank, as you recall, sits over there. We didn't write a check to the ambulance company until we had it in hand. So that's really kind of just the recap. If there's any comments or questions, you know, I think if there is a, you know, we as the city can educate, you know, we can tell people about the tax, but we can't collectively advocate. So, you know, a citizen group wishes to advocate, or we want to use them for educate, those are certainly opportunities. But the city can't go out and say, please go vote for this, but we can certainly say, this is how this tax has been valuable to the community, why it's valuable to the community. Here's how it works, you know, and that's what we did last time, and I think it was very successful. We got out to various clubs, you know, not all here in, in Edwardsville. We got out to the school, I think we had a couple of public meetings about it, in which staff and, and the council were present at those. So I think those are the kind of things that's necessary to help educate it, because I think it's fair to say, if you just say tax, you know, it generally has a negative connotation, that's right. But this is about, do you want to invest in your community, and if, and here's a way to invest, and you're helping to ensure that people that may not reside here, but that, you know, they may work here, they are passing through our communities, they're our guests. But we, we need to be prepared when they need our services, as well as the person that lives here. And this is a way to help fund that more equally across the population.
Yeah, Mike, thanks for this information, it's really good, good stuff. And I, and I was a part of that in the past, obviously, ten years ago, but I do like the idea of having a couple of different opportunities for the public to come in and ask questions. I think it'd be cool to have, or great to have, the equipment that we bought with this special tax money, to have it there for the citizens to see. And so they can actually see, you know, with this special tax, what, you know, what's, what it's doing for our community.
Sure.
I think that is key on this. So if I heard you correctly, right now, we're at a half percent is what it's set at?
Correct.
So that the, the average, yearly average is around, around $400,000?
That's where, yeah, I think we're budgeting four forty this year, but over the, over the period thus far, we're averaging a little under four hundred thousand.
And this tax doesn't go back to the, it's not a special tax to the citizens, it's items purchased in our city?
Correct, right. If it's purchased in the city and it is taxable, then it is subject, whether it's a sales tax or a use tax, so, right, there's two different... It's sales and use tax. So sales taxes, I go into the store and buy it, and I take it with me. A, a use tax is generally something that is delivered to you, that you pay sales tax.
Perfect.
Broadly.
Thank you.
I think that overall, when we have an initiative that is taking off the burden from property taxes, real estate taxes in our city is very beneficial. Especially when we're looking at quality of life and life-saving things, and that's roads and parks. And what I would really like to work toward, and we want to, I know we want to be careful with verbiage to make it something that will pass by the residents. So, so we don't want to get too out there, but I would like it to include all first responders, so that the police department could benefit from that as well.
I would tend to occur, I mean, again, it was, I, I think to Mr. Scott's comment, so when we did this ten years ago, we couldn't really show the benefit, right? I think we can clearly show the benefits today, right? I mean, you, you can drive on it, you can see it, you can touch it, you can participate in, in, you know, your kids are playing disc golf, and that got bought, you know, these... So I think people could see on that.
Definitely makes a difference when you can touch and feel what, what that money's buying.
Absolutely.
And so you did say too, you have a, the range is from a point five to a two oh...
Correct, yeah. Yeah. And some, I will say, some cities will, will take a position where they'll, they'll say, well, and I'll, I'll use Bonner Furniture, they've done this, right? So they've had sales taxes dedicated to building their swimming pool, and then when that ended, they might dedicate it to another use, building, the fire station or police or... So you can either be a little more general like we are, or you can adopt these and say, we're gonna use it, and then when that's finished, then we'll, we'll reallocate it and go use it for something else. I, I think at least, you know, now, eight years ago, but, but I think the general feeling in this community was they preferred to see it maybe a little broader, broader spread to it, the way we did it. You know, by keeping it at a half cent, right? We're not adjusting it, it's not, you know, it's not an increase, it's the same thing. And we could leave the language exactly the same, and it's treated a little bit different, it's just treated as a renewal. When you change the language, it's somewhat treated as a new, in that sense, language. But I mean, again, I think it's fairly easy to show the benefits, and that generally, the benefits are gonna be the same if you include all public safety in there. I mean, it, it's, the value is still where the value should be.
So what's the process, Mike, if we wanted to increase, increase that tax rate?
Simply become part of the ballot language.
And I want to hear it.
Yeah, I, you know, I was in on this from the start, and I was really scared that it would not pass, and it surprised me that it did pass. And I think that one of the selling points on it was, correct me if I'm wrong, I know you were there too. We gotta understand that most of our residents don't shop in Edwardsville. They're going to K seven and Kansas Avenue, and they're paying for Bonner Springs Recreation Center, the swimming pool. Where we get the business from is from the industrial park down there, the retail part of that, and the people that eat here and go in and buy cokes and cigarettes and all that stuff in our local areas. And that's one of the selling points of that. I don't know, three-quarter of what is, sounds good, but I think that might be kind of dangerous.
Right now?
Yeah, but the way, the way the taxes are now, that three-quarter might be dangerous, but I think we'd be with a little bit. I think, do you know what the vote was at the last time? Is there any way you...
It was sixty-six percent, I think is what it said on that.
Sixty-six, I wasn't sure, sixty-six, sixty-seven, so about two to one. For a city of five thousand, that's, I would say that we've got a pretty good chance of making that pass. I think, you know, kind of on your, you know, on your, your topic about the taxes, and I mean, you're correct. There's also sales taxes that occur sometimes on big sales, like, so we had a, we have a particular, yeah, or that's one. We, some of our commercial companies down here, when they buy their new tractor trailers and things like that, those are a use tax. And so those get, those, not all, it kind of depends how they've set them up, but those get taxed. You know, we've had a couple of years where we look and say, why is that company, you know, our number one sales tax? And then you find out they bought twenty new tractor trailers or something of that nature, a couple of hundred thousand each, or whatever those things cost. And, you know, and it, and it certainly changes those dynamics. So you're correct. Again, a lot of ours, as we know, we have a lot of transient, the workforce in and out, right? People just driving because of the highway system, you know, stop. I will say, you know, gas is not included, right? So there is no sales tax on gasoline, it's gasoline tax, completely separate. So this doesn't impact the price of gasoline, cause we get, we always get asked that question, but gasoline is not subject to sales tax.
That's definitely something to make sure that is included in that presentation around the gas.
Yeah, and that's what we did in the past.
So what happens if we propose a three-quarter percent increase and it doesn't pass? What's our options?
Well, one of the reasons to do this in this year is that you then have another opportunity or opportunities to do it in the following year. So, yeah, elections are held on uniform election dates, which are August and November. I think we talked about that, that, you know, but August is generally, uh, there may or may not be an election on that date, right? It's kind of based on candidates and whether there's a going, I want to use runoff, but that's the wrong word, but, you know, preliminary election. If there's not, then it's a special election that we have to pay for. Some cities use mail-in ballots because it's a, if you're doing it on your own, it's generally a less expensive, it is less expensive than an in-person election, right? Because in the in-person, you gotta have a site, and you gotta have the equipment, and you gotta have the people and all those things. Whereas with the mail, you do have the cost of mailing the ballot and the postage to return it, and, and some counting. But you don't have as much, you don't have as many people and as much equipment as you would on an in-person. By putting it with another election, you're only responsible for those costs that are above and beyond what that regular election costs. So if it's another, you know, thousand dollars to do, add that ballot item, which generally it's not, right? It's, it's, it's on the same ballot, so unless you, unless your item kicks it to another page, then typically, it's just really covered, with the exception of some cost of counting and certifications that they have to do.
Right.
So it's fairly low, low cost, but you would have another opportunity if you do it this year, and then you would still have 2025 without the tax sunsetting on you.
And Michael, I'd like to, when you want to expand this to facilities, so...
That's a question.
Right. I would like to see a chunk of it carved out, say, whatever it is, twenty-five thousand, thirty thousand for facilities maintenance. Cause we shouldn't incur any major maintenance in the first five years, you know? And if you put that aside, when we start having, you know, the cost of an air conditioner is thirty thousand dollars, you know? If we set that aside, we can let that build up to where, when it comes to that point, we won't have to say, hey, we need to buy a new air conditioner. It's gonna be thirty thousand dollars wherever we're gonna get it. It would be sitting there in that fund. Yeah, a roof or anything, you know, I mean, major stuff, you know?
And that's where this language that we did around parks was a little more open. It says acquiring, repairing, maintenance, operations of some parks and recreation. I'm, I'm not the, the bond attorney that gave us advice, but that one gives you a, gives you that ability to do things like you're talking, like...
I would...
Air conditioning, a roof, may not be, you know, I mean, acquiring equipment may not be covered. And you've got the full language in your package.
Right.
I think those are the kind of thing, they may be just small changes. I think a, a bigger question is if you want to change the rate? and/or, right, do you, do you leave the rate alone and do you do a, a separate sales tax, which would be a separate item on a ballot? If, if you wanted to have another tax or something else. I can tell you that our tax rate is the lowest around. So our, our overall tax rate excluding TIFs, right, or, or CIDs, uh, is nine percent. The average is around nine point four, I think. And of course, I'm sure some of y'all have been to some areas, right? I mean, there are certain areas up in the Legends and other, you know, o- other places in Overland Park where you're pushing 11% on sales taxes.
And I, I think that, um, I mean, I know people that live here in our city that will look at sales tax.
Sure.
And shop based on the sales tax. And so they'll drive, instead of going to Aldi at the Legends, they will go to the Aldi in Shawnee.
Right.
So we want to be conscious of that, making sure that we're, um, not pushing it too hard to be detrimental to the businesses here. But, but I, I think that, I mean, I can't speak for everybody, but I think generally, um, people will be really supportive of continuing this and, and.
It's something, we can come back to you with some options, you know, what would that look like? And then, I mean, again, we wanted to get this before you tonight, just to kind of get this discussion going. You know, we can come back and say, well, what if, you know, what, what, what would we see for 10 years at, at this versus 10 years at this? You know, some proposed language changes, right? We, we could do that. Because that's really the first phase, we got to have, what's, what's that ballot language going to be? Because it's hard to go out to the public and say, uh, here's this, here's this election coming up and here's the, but we don't know what the language is going to be yet. So we, we kind of need to, to tie that down fairly quickly, right?
Well, I think it's, it's all in about the delivery too, about if we want to keep the rate the same or raise it a little bit.
Right.
And explain, it's got to get paid one way or another. And I don't know, I remember, because I was here during the first one. You made an interesting comment, Garrett, about all the people that shop and most of the people that buy stuff.
They're in place for us here, unless you want a coke.
Right.
If you want crunchery, you're supporting Bonner Springs.
Exactly.
We had car dealership down here that when it moved out, it went down and then, you know, they come back in and it kind of goes back up. That's what you got to look at. It's not affecting our residents nearly as much as it's affecting the people that are coming in here and spending their days. When Roscoe's, where they eat at Roscoe's, they eat at Grill Thirty. That's, that's where the benefit of it is. And that's the selling point of it as far as I'm concerned.
How it's delivered.
So the seventy-five, you know, the three quarter percent, seventy-five percent even sounds better, if you could get that sold to the public.
And if we can show how that would reduce their real estate taxes, I think, and then showing, you know, just like Scott mentioned, having the trucks in the streets and things like that to really show. I've seen some cities will put signs out like this was provided by the special sales tax, you know? Things like that, I think are really, for people to have a tangible, uh, reflection of, of what that money went to.
I think it's very important. I mean, again, I, I think it's, I, I don't want to say it's easy, but it's easier in the sense that, again, you now can see the fruits of those investments, right? And, and what the citizens, right, the benefit they're receiving, and they're not paying a hundred percent of that cost.
I think Zach would plug this a few times in the hot shot too, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, we're all the time trying to put that out there through the hot shot, through other social medias.
Right.
Again, we, we can, we can educate, right, and, and we can do a lot of education. Add, you know, if somebody wants to have an advocate, you know, they want to advocate to go put, you know, to get signed, print and says vote for, you know, then, then that'll have to be a citizen-based group, right? Uh, I mean, we, we, again, we can provide them, we can provide the data, the information. We can print materials that talk about, you know, the logistics of it, the education of it, those things. We just have to be cautious not to have, you know, what you do individually, uh, you know, I, I probably defer to the city attorney to, to give you any advice on that. But I mean, collectively as a city, you know, and, and as staff, we can't go out and advocate on behalf of the city.
So, go ahead.
I have a, I have a question. I can't remember, is there a title to it, like on, on the ballot? Is there like a bold title and then the body of it? It seems to me like when you have statewide things, it'll say something like, like value them both and then it had all of the language in it. It does have a title, which to me would be, that's the single most important thing on the ballot, is that bold in the line. Like the, the safety and the safety and, and recreation special use tax.
Yeah.
We need to research, I don't, I don't know, I don't remember, I mean.
I, I know sometimes it gets hard, you know, some of these ballot languages, especially when they, or the double negatives, right? Shall some, some, something, but a vote for no is a yes, and a yes is a no, and gets confusing, you know, even for us all who go to the polls on a regular basis, right? But the ballot, I mean, ultimately the ballot itself, right, the ballot language, the ballot has to be approved by the election commission, right? That's true.
But it does have a title.
It does have a title, I think, right? But, but, I mean, uh, the, the, the language does have to be approved, right? It's not just, we do it and that's it.
I don't know if there's an actual title, I think it's, at least in the ones I'm looking at now, uh, City of Lawrence, questions, ballot question, it says question number one.
Right.
Shall the following be adopted and has a special sales tax language? So for example, shall the City of Lawrence, Kansas be authorized to impose a special purpose city retailer sales tax in the amount of two tenths of one percent on retail sales consummated within the City of Lawrence, Kansas for the purpose of operating a city public transit system, et cetera. So you lay out your special purpose, up to one percent increments of one, zero, five percent. And then at the end of the question, it says to vote in favor of this question, darken the oval, completely next to the board, yes. To vote against it, darken the oval, completely next to the board, no. Which I think is distinct from, uh, constitutional amendment, ballot question that legislature actually passes an explanatory statement next to what yes means and what no means.
Can, can we come up with a copy of that first ballot?
Yeah, it's in your packet, the language is.
Well, no, the, the ballot.
Oh, yes.
The ballot, so we see what the ballot looked like.
Oh, to, an actual copy of the ballot? We can.
I'll bet downtown can get it for us.
Probably so, and we may have copies here. I mean, this is the ballot language straight from the ballot, but the actual.
To see what it looked like on a piece of paper.
Because it was included with, and with other items, I just, I don't remember.
Nice to see the whole.
I don't remember in, in November of 2014, what, what the election.
Michael, was it, I remember at one time, wasn't it semi-tires was the number one sales tax? Russ.
Oh, could have been TCI Tire.
Yeah, TCI Tire was like the number, it was semi-tires. Yeah, it was unbelievable how many they, they were selling. Yeah, so see, it doesn't.
We've tried to reach out to their, uh, act, the people that acquired them to maybe reconsider allocation.
Yeah.
So, so Michael, what's the next step then, if we want to look at the language?
Yeah.
Modify the language or increase or whatever we want to do for a, what's our next step as a council?
Well, I think that we can come back with some modified language for y'all to consider. We can come back with some of the rate potentials, what those would, would, would look like, right? I mean, I mean, quite honestly, the, the first item about approving and rebuilding and maintaining roads and stuff like that, it probably doesn't need to change because it's pretty inclusive. And all of these have this language that says, including the financing of the same. And the reason for that is, and we've used it every time, if you go out and issue bonds or debt or lease purchases or anything of that nature, then you can use this to make those payments, right? If we didn't have that language in there when we went to go buy a fire truck, we would have had to save the money and then pay cash. Well, as you know, uh, you never can seem to, you never can save enough, right? And sometimes it's, it's more advantageous to borrow because you can get interest rates, uh, at, at a certain rate. So all of these have that language in there. So it can be used to make the payments on those, on those debt. And we, that language, we would obviously recommend continue to stay in there. But again, I think the first one probably doesn't change. The second one probably stays pretty close. I think it would be the one where before we were pretty limiting to fire trucks and fire ambulances and fire equipment. That's the one where we would spend the time looking at how we open that up. And I think it would be, whether it's an additional item or within that item, if you wanted to include public safety facilities as a use of taxes, right?
I definitely think on, on C, I mean, it does a great job on our fire, putting in ambulances, but it doesn't say anything about release equipment.
Exactly.
Police vehicles.
Yeah.
So I think that that needs to be included in writing, so.
And that's what I'm saying, yeah. That, that's the area, I think, I, I think one in, you know, A and B probably don't really change. Uh, I mean, we'll reread it and kind of rethink about it. You know, do we want, I mean, we've always treated parks to include the community center and the cemetery because they're under the CPPS board. So that's always been our interpretation of that, and that's fine. You know, if we think we need to be more clear, we, we, we might look at that, I don't know that we do. But again, C is the one that's the most limiting of the three options, and that's probably what we need to look at.
Yes, I, I would definitely include, in my opinion, the, the police equipment vehicles in that language. And then maybe even looking at adding a D for facilities, maintenance.
Right. And those are probably being inclusive, right? We wouldn't, I, I, well, we could, that's the discussion, right? How, how inclusive or, or limiting do you want to put that language? I think we have enough information, we, we, you know, we'll be, we can come back in two weeks. And I mean, not saying you're going to approve it in two weeks, but we can kind of come back with a, kind of get this. I mean, we need to get this piece kind of continuing and, and if we can get that, the earlier we get it done, we can send it to the election commission, election administrator, whatever the right title is, have them review it, make sure there's nothing from a, you know, from their standpoint statutory that would prevent us from using that language and get their kind of sign off. And then it also helps them know what to expect coming up in their elections for laying things out. They will give us an estimate of cost, generally that estimate will be high because they're going to, they're, they're, they're going to make the assumption that it's going to have a page all to itself and it's going to add and, and do all this stuff, right? That, I mean, I don't, that's, that's kind of, they're going to look at kind of a worst case scenario typically. But the couple of times we've had election-related items, they've generally been much less than the estimate, can't say always. All right, thank you very much. We do have our auditor here, so I'll let you want to move to that item. Sean Gordon here.
Consider 2022 financial statement and report of the city's independent certified public.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sean Gordon with Gordon CPA. We've performed the 2022 audit of the city, so I'll go through that bound copy you've had in front of you or that you've seen in your agenda packet. Um, and just kind of explain section by section what you're looking at. So we'll start on pages one and two, this is called the independent auditor, auditors report, excuse me. Here we discuss the opinion that we issued for the audit, management and the council's responsibilities for the city's financial statements, and then more of our responsibilities further on down. The main paragraph I kind of want to point out in this section is the third paragraph down on page one. You'll see an italicized heading called unmodified opinion on regulatory basis of accounting. That paragraph says that the highest and cleanest opinion we could issue the city's financial statements for 2022. We did issue the financial statements for 2022, uh, so it reflects very well on the financial and internal control management of the city during that calendar year timeframe. Um, as I said before, further on down, there's, there's talk about the city's responsibilities and then our responsibilities as well. Uh, flipping forward to page three, this is called the summary statement of receipts, expenditures and unencumbered cash. Here you'll see in the left-hand column, all of the different funds of the city and then beginning cash, receipts, expenditures and then ending cash. Um, at the very bottom, uh, right hand of that, um, the very bottom of that right-hand column, ending cash balance, you'll see that the city had $7.3 million of cash on hand at 1231, 2022. Um, this is an increase from that left-hand column you'll see there of, of about $900,000, um, uh, for, for the calendar year. So, so the, the bottom line of the city increased by about $900,000, um, from year to year. Uh, flipping forward, starting on page four and running through page nine, these are the notes to the financial statements. This is, uh, quite a, quite a read. Uh, we discussed the accounting policies of the city. Um, there's information on the city's long-term debt, involvement in the capers and KPNF retirement program, uh, many items discussed here. This section is mostly the same as what you've seen over the past few years, there were no requirements, uh, no changes required by the state for this time period. And then, uh, the final section in your bound copy starts on page 10 and runs through page 34. These are just more detailed breakouts of those funds that are presented on page three. So you'll see, um, more details of the revenues and expenses in those funds. You'll also see a comparison to the budget that was adopted for 2022, um, on, on these pages as well. Um, and then I, I'll go ahead and have you flip back to page 10. Here's where we do a, um, budget expenditure comparison. Um, and, and all of those negative numbers in the very right-hand column, the variance over, under column, um, are actually good news for the city. So that means that they were under budget in each of those funds. So again, that reflects very well on the financial management and budget management by the city, uh, city as a whole. Um, we had one auditor recommendation, uh, for 2022 and it had to do with some sales tax that was paid on credit card purchases. We always recommend that if you can avoid paying sales tax on, on any purchase, um, especially credit cards, that you should do that. So we had a very good audit, um, Mike and Zach and everybody else involved in the audit process really helped us out this year and, and did a great job getting us all of the requests that we had. So with that, do you have any questions for me?
I do. I was going to ask you about, um, the, you know, we say we're in a healthy financial position. Don't know if you're aware, but, but, but we're kind of in the process of building some new facilities, much-needed facilities. And if we were to take on, let's just hypothetically say, $15 million in debt, where would that put us? I mean, would we still be financially stable or are we biting off more windshield?
Well, so one of the things that we specifically look at as an auditor is we take, if you flip to page three, we take the total expenditures to $10.5 million. And we look at how much cash does the city have on hand to, to make those expenditures last? So, um, you can see in the very right-hand column, 7.36 is what the, the city had on hand. So the city has, of what, nine months of, of expenditures on hand right now? The recommendation that we kind of look at is two to three months. So I would say it is healthy, but then you have to start looking, you know, breaking down and see where is that cash at? So there's, there, it's a fluid thing, you just kind of have to get your numbers and then plug it in and see if it would work. But just a first glance, it does look like, like a little bit more could be added for those specific projects.
Okay, thank you.
Was it a significant number in credit card, um, purchases for sales tax or was it just like a?
Yeah, so we, we randomly choose 25 transactions to test and that's two a month. And then we add another one, of course, to get to the 25. We noted there were three transactions that had sales tax, so three out of 25, not bad. If you were to allocate that over the number of credit card transactions throughout the year in the city, it might be a little bit high. Um, I don't remember the dollar amount, but I would guess, you know, it's, it's pretty insignificant, but it is just something that we want to make everybody aware of.
You got to find something.
Generally, I mean, for most of our big things, right, we have sales tax exemptions on, so the Home Depot or things where we purchase. Where that happens sometimes is, uh, we're going to have a, you know, a meeting, we're out of water, you got to, I mean, I know this happened to me. So we were, I think on one of the council workshops, we didn't have any water, we need some water, so I run up to, uh, to Dollar General and, you know, trying to get them to pull up their sales tax stuff and things. And it was an eight-dollar purchase, I'm like, fine, just, you know? I mean, they, they, they were lost on how to do it and it's like, it's those kind of things typically that that happens. So we're, we're pretty cognizant of it, but sometimes that happens. I, I'll plead guilty to that one, I know I, I think it may have been last year, but, uh, but, you know, it's those kind of things generally. But our big purchases, we always do the sales tax exemptions forms or stuff, so. And sometimes it's a new employee where they've come in and they just, they, they're still, just don't know that process, right? So they go and get something and they just don't know to remind. So they go and get something and they just don't know to remind the, the person working at the register, oh, by the way, we're, we're exempt. And our cards have our numbers on them. So it just, those are generally the likely scenarios. I would note, Mr. Bishop, just to, I think it was in our memo, uh, that, you know, debt to assess valuation, as you've heard from our financial advisor, uh, you know, is one of the key numbers that they look at for, for debt ratios and for things. And the, you know, as I think we've noted in the past and we thought we would be, you know, about there, which is 8.27, which is on the, on the very low end of the spectrum, right? We, we've talked about 25%, so I'm not saying we should do that, but I think relatively speaking, we're in a very healthy relationship on our debt ratios.
Mr. Gordon, this is a lot of, of information. Thank you so much for coming tonight. I know it's hard for me to, um, come up with questions real quick since we just, just got it this evening. Um, I, I would suggest maybe if we could, uh, email you if we have questions as we're reviewing it um, so that we have time before, um, you know, saying, hey, we don't have any questions, we're good to go. That way the whole council has time to, to look over the document.
Are you suggesting, I mean, and, and you're, I mean, this is your audit and the auditor works for the council, right? But staff's role is to provide the information that they request and that's why they talk about whether management is helpful or hindrance. Uh, so it's your audit to accept and so you can do that.
Mr. Gordon, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
In the past years, we, we've always had some kind of a comment about not having enough staff to double check things and so forth. From your estimation, are we still in that position or have we addressed that well with our procedures and staff?
Yeah, yeah. I, I think there's, there's ways around if you, if you can't find the staff or can't afford the, to have that number of staff. There's ways around it, right? Sometimes the city manager is more involved in the process. Um, sometimes upper staff members or even the council are involved in the process. So we, we felt comfortable with, with the other ways that it was being addressed that, that that wasn't a comment that we needed to make this year.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the, the audit from Gordon CPA.
And just to go forward and to answer Mike's question, that was my suggestion was that we consider tabling it to give the council time to review the entire document before we accept it, but we can.
I just want to make sure they're your auditor making their presentation. It's not the city.
Sure.
We prepared documents.
No. It's just a lot of information that I know I haven't had time to review. So, um, it, but I don't believe I vote on it. So, um, I'll get to the council if they feel like they reviewed it. So we've been motioned in a second. I'm assuming we don't have any more questions for the auditor while he's here. Okay, will clerk please call roll?
Scott?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Malot?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
I, I would note however, that if you, please review it further if you have questions. It's always very open to responding. If it's a question staff can answer, we certainly would answer too. The numbers aren't going to change. I mean, I mean, that part, but I mean, uh, why is this number this way? Or how does this work? Or, or some of those things, whether it's staff or Mr. Gordon, we can certainly help you. Or you just have a question about how we, how he gets to a number. Obviously they have a lot of working papers behind all this, uh, that they have.
Sure. And I greatly appreciate that and your time for coming. I just don't.
I think that credit goes to Zach and Mike on the work that they do to make sure that we've come out positive on these budgets all these years, you know, there's very, very seldom been any kind of big regulations come up. I think all the credit goes to the staff and the department heads on maintaining the budgets the way they did. They, they have, they deserve good ones for that.
I, I will say, uh, and I think Zach and I will be in agreement on this. Uh, we, we probably did more financial management, budget, payroll, uh, me writing G O, uh, transactions. We have a new finance director to start of the day. We didn't want to totally, you know, submerge him. So he'll be, you'll see him at the next meeting. Uh, his name is Met Hat, uh, Hakeem. Uh, I think he's going to be a real good asset for us. He's very accounting focused. Uh, and I think both Zach and I are happy to have him on board and, and just. Get him into the meeting. Hopefully we can take a little less direct role.
Does he's half fit?
Yeah.
He's coming back tomorrow.
Yeah. Well, we believe so. He said it was five o'clock. So, uh, we'll, we'll see you tomorrow morning. So.
Very good. Thank you so much, Mr. Gordon, for coming tonight. And again, I just, uh, think it's, it's always a good idea, best practice to make sure we're reviewing documents in our entire. Going for item number six, your presentation regarding the Edwardsville Fire Department 2022 activity.
Mayor, council members, this is the follow-up, kind of as the police chief did, uh, two months ago on the actions and activities within 2022 for the fire department. Um, if you sit there and entertain me for a few minutes, we'll get through this. Some hot points we need to start with is significant events that occurred in 2022. One was the Junior Fire Academy Summer Camp, which was funded in part by donation from Fastenal. And then I'm going to plug in a special sales tax of the Parks and Rec program that allowed that three-week program to go on. Um, we also had our three career firefighters that are also females worked the same shift last, last August, the sixth, and caught a structured fire up by Councilmember Bishop's house. Uh, we do carry about 20% of our workforce is minority, uh, which is far and above the nationwide average. We also had the second consecutive year of a loss of life non-duty related to a volunteer or part-time employee. Um, that kind of shook the department to its core to sit there and deal with a little bit. Um, we did have the, coming off of the pandemic related events. We had a couple of days of prescribed burning and fire management for the city. We had a deployment uh, to Western Kansas for mitigation progress project as part of our certification with the Wildland Task Force. We had the Highland development going in off of High, Highland Street that acquired, gave us the four fire structures that were shared between us and the police department. I know the police department logged several, several hours of K-9 based training. Officer Yasbeck had scheduled. We were up there quite often tearing them up along with the community colleges. So again, when most people look at the fire department, they think we're sitting in the station all day and a lot of times we are not. Um, part of that lead in as to why they think that we're not making a number of calls. But most of our calls are low acuity EMS calls that we do not run lights and sirens on. So when you sit there and consider a low acuity call, that is the Billy ache. That is, I have not felt good for 24 to 48 hours or it's two o'clock in the morning. I've been sick at my stomach for three weeks and now it's the emergency that I want to go to the emergency room. We saw a record number of calls, 1,225 calls last year. When we sit there and look at our medical response, they were 893 calls. Our records management system with NIFRS separates the difference between EMS call and a traffic accident. So we have another 36 traffic accidents we require any fire and EMS response on. We had nine structured fires in the city limits last year and we had about 287 other calls for service. Other calls include our vehicle fires, our dumpster fires, carbon monoxide investigations, gas odor smells, blood draws for the police department, wild and fires, activated fire alarms, et cetera. When we sit there and look at our overall five-year plan or our overall response from the last five years, you can see in 2021, we were starting to rebound a little bit back from the pandemic. So we had an almost 20% call and right, 20% increase in calls in 2022 alone. Uh, the pandemic had weighed down and everybody now decided they want to go back to the hospital, appeared to be. While we have sat there and looked at the data from 2015, which has already been eight years that I've been here to now, we've had almost a 30% increase in calls over the eight-year volume. When I first got here several years ago, we ran about 120 to 140 fire alarm calls a year. If you on the council remember, five years ago, we passed the, the false alarm fee. We started educating a lot of our communities. This past year, we made 28 activated fire alarms in the industrial park. So we've sat there and always looked at the approach of how do we reduce the call burden? Trying to keep a target number in there and we're still watching the calls still increase. Another example is we have stopped and quit doing in 2020, going to for lift assists in a nursing facility. We were getting about 150 calls a year to the nursing facilities to help them pick up patients off the floor. It's a healthcare facility. There's no need for EMS to make that call. So that we are constantly monitoring and looking at our ways to reduce the burden on our equipment, our response personnel and still providing the highest caliber of service. However, again, 73% of our overall call volume is EMS in nature. And out of that, over 70% of it is low acuity calls, uh, based off priority dispatch. When we look at that number, remember that is the top five basis of EMS calls. That is a cardiac chest pain, neurological deficiency such as a stroke or possible stroke, an unconscious, unresponsive and a major trauma or difficulty breathing. So that makes up a very small parameter of our large acuity, major acuity critical calls. However, out of most of our acuity, high acuity level calls, we are making medical transports on them. And even those high acuity critical transport calls are not to the level that we have to run lights and sirens. We are trying to reduce the risk and liability of traffic accidents and everything else because today the modern driver is so distracted. I hate getting up on the interstate for a tra, for a traffic accident or any other call. Because it's almost like you're trying to play dodging cars with their drive. So we have sat there and taken the approach that most time if we can take a low acuity dispatch call, make it as a non-emergency response. We are finding out that we have only increased our response time by about 17 to 25 seconds and that we are reducing our risk of being involved in a traffic accident. Now, we do have the pleasure of having some areas that we have, uh, traffic signals and preemptive, uh, traffic signals such as live and drive and fourth and 32. They are not preemptive devices. Um, as we continue to sit there and monitor the take on what the intersections will be, we'll decide if we have that pushed later on in time. When we break down our zones, remember that we sit there and talk about the calls. 599 of our calls are in zone one. Zone one is from Third Street to Ninth Street, south of K-32. Zone two and zone three are both east and west of 102nd Street, north of K-32. Starting in 2023, we're going to break down that parameters of zone two and three because the majority, over half of the calls in zone two and three occur between Williamson Farms, Rock Ridge. I think it's Castle Rock, um, condominiums right there. So the majority of our calls in zone two and three comprised of just three neighborhoods. Zone four is everything east of Third Street behind us. And you can see that that's sit there and is our second highest area number of calls and zone five is the industrial complex. So when we sit there and look at the zone five numbers alone, remember we dropped that by almost 100 just in firearm calls alone over the last five years. Unclassified zones, the 125 calls are mutual aid calls that are outside of our city.
What'd you say was zone one was?
Zone one is between Third Street and Ninth Street, south of K-32, Old Town, as, as everybody refers to it. Our average response time in 2022 increased to four minutes and 35 seconds, up from 3:10 in 2015. Part of the uptick I will explain here in a little bit. However, before we go into the breakdowns, we see zone one is 305, zone two is 633, zone three is 657. Those are going to be some of the furthest northern limits that we have in our response territory. Riverview and 98th, Riverview and 94th. Zone four, again, as we said, is the industrial or the trailer park behind us and zone five is the industrial park. What pushed some of our average response time up to 4:35 was our unclassified mutual aid responses. When we look at our average response time of four minutes, 35 seconds, national standards indicate that for a fire response, we have to be on scene within six minutes or less, 80% of the time. 80% of the time. We are averaging more like 96% of the time. Get the first end of resources there. For an ALS response call, we have nine minutes or less. We are beating that anywhere within our city. For 90% of the time, nine minutes or less, and 12 minutes or less for BLS call, 90% of the time or less. So when we sit there and look at our overall response time, we're also comparing it to the metro. And around the metro, the metro averages are five minutes and 42 seconds for a structured fire response. The best EMS response time in the metro was eight minutes and 17 seconds for about 64% of the EMS related calls. And the worst was 1604. So when you look at the fact that all of the services that are making EMS calls, it is predominantly 70 to 80% of the call volume that the modern primary emergency services make. So when we look at key marks, we sit there and talk about what the difference between two or three minutes can make. Yes, it is a life or death factor and most critical calls, which again, remember that's only about 30% of our acuity calls. Only about 30% of the acuity of our critical calls require for a critical nature for an ALS intervention with it. So we've sat there and compare our nationals, our average response time to the metro into the nationwide average. I'm pretty happy with the response times that we have out there. We do have an increase in overlapping EMS calls. When Chief Mathies and the city manager looked in 2014 to introduce EMS into the city fire departments, um, I think the number was a lot less than 209 overlapping calls based off the map. Again, that was 400 calls less in 2014. Um, we're sitting there looking at this past year, 209, we're 17% of the calls. We have two simultaneous calls occurring within 15 minutes. At this point in time, that 15 minutes, both ambulances are on the road. The chief or the deputy chief has been called back in to staff the fire trucks. We can keep a third piece in relation. 98% of those calls were on, or 98 calls of that 209 or 8% of them were within a 60-minute window. If I believe correctly, in 2014, it was a larger 60-minute window than it was a 15-minute window. However, 34 calls, 34 calls in 2022, there were zero resources available. We had three consecutive calls running within 15 minutes of one another. We had mutual aid resources coming in to cover those resource, those necessary emergency calls, um, within the city. So our total response time and turnaround time, from the time we leave the chute, going out the door, arrive on scene, treat a patient, transport, transport to the hospital, drop off, clear the hospital, come back into the city is an hour and 17 minutes. Our closest hospital is our least used hospital because we are diverted more times than not as soon as we announced that we are going there. So our two most populous hospitals that we transport to are Overland Park Regional and KU Downtown. That is why we have such a large time on our response time out of the station before we get back. Also, the number that goes, those are coming in at number three is Children's Mercy. Those are our top three transport destinations when we're sitting there talking about our EMS calls. And that, all of those are outside the city by a very decent distance. So when we sit there and start looking at our overlapping EMS calls, we have to keep that target number on there because that is going to sit there and be of more concern. Four times last year, I was called to go deal with an ambulance crew that was walled or as we call wall time at a local hospital where they just parked over in a corner because the hospital will not sign for them because they either have no beds or not enough staff to cover. We're starting to see that number increase a little bit more this year. There are nationwide directives identifying to the hospitals that there is no more closing of hospitals or diversions and trying to clear the wall time of EMS agencies. In some locations in the United States, a wall time can be in excess of an hour and 30 minutes that a paramedic crew is tied up on. Our crews are directed by policy that they have 15 minutes to drop off a patient and clear the hospital or they have to sit there and notify us in the report and while they're on the wall. The majority of the time, our crews have cleared the hospital, restocked the ambulance, refitted the ambulance and been back in service and back in the city or back and route to the city within about 20 minutes. So we're not sitting in an EMS room for that hour and 17 timeframe. There is a rationale out behind not letting them sit there, grab your snack, get back in the truck and get back because of our overlapping calls and the increasing call volume that we have. The other question that a lot of people bring up is, oh my gosh, we're being delayed by the trains all the time. When you don't realize that we're not running hot, most people don't even know when we're out on a call. But we had tracked through 2022, we were delayed by the train 51 times. When we do our record reporting, there is a specific required question is, were you delayed by the train? Was the train in motion? Was it stopped? Then we track by our CAD volume or PAD data when we sit there and declare we're delayed by a train and when we're not. 51 times, 13 of those were responding to the call. The initial call had come in and we were responding. 38 of the times that we were delayed was while we were transporting the patients. Our average delay was 49 seconds throughout the entire process. At no time last year was it documented that we had a train completely stopped on our tracks, that we had to do a stop and turnaround. Now, I do know that we've sat there and started monitoring it on the administrative side of how many times it's stopped and starting to make calls to U P to determine why they're stopped. Because the crew loading point is actually supposed to be right behind Dollar General to where Casey Wood is. So a lot of times when we have train delays, the traffic is stopped right through the middle of all three intersections is because there's been a declared stop somewhere within the rail system. Usually it's due to a traffic. Usually it's due to a traffic accident or a derailment of some sort that the, the rules within the rail industry by the United States is an all stop to close whatever they want to. They don't have to go to the next location point because you don't know where at the grid, you may have an all stop. Um, we have had about twenty-two minutes of times that we've had trains stopped and blocking all three exits. Or all three ramps. The next big question is, oh my gosh, we go to Bonner Springs all the time and it's probably three hundred times a year. It's a hundred and fifteen times. Out of that hundred and fifteen times, eighty-five of them were for EMS. Fourteen of them were for traffic accidents, sixteen's were for fire and in twenty twenty-two, we were canceled en route twenty-six times. We were requested and responded to Kansas City, Kansas twice, once for an EMS call up on four thirty-five and I seventy for a six-vehicle traffic accident, ended up being a multi-futility and then for one power, one fire in Kansas City, Kansas. We were requested for mutual aid one time by Sean E. And the seven other times came from either other agencies in Johnson County. However, they were all in Lebworth County last year. They were Sherman areas, right on the north side of Bonner Springs for mutual aid for structured fires. When we look at a comparison between the two years of Bonner Springs and Edwardsville, it's a eleven call difference. However, the eleven calls are made up in the amount of number of times that we were canceled en route. Our number of EMS calls increased by two. Our traffic accidents did increase by ten. Our fires increased by two, however, our canceled en route increased or decreased by ten or increased by ten. When we sit there and look at an EMS call and we are going to Bonner Springs for an emergency medical services call, we are not being requested to do an interfacility transfer, transfer out of their, their stone. That is contracted out through AMR, but, uh, Bonner Springs does not even do their own transfers out as to where we do. We are dealing with high, usually high acuity, acuity, uh, acuity, uh, high levels of EMS critical care responses that are initially called in. This is the majority of the time when people actually see us light up lights and sirens and leave town and start sitting there thinking, oh my gosh, we're doing it all the time, every time. However, due to the staffing differences is where we want to see the difference of what we give out compared to what we bring in. We received mutual aid times forty-five times last year in twenty twenty-two. Thirty-nine times from Bonner Springs, twenty-six of them were for ambulance calls. Five for traffic accidents, it's more than one or two victims. Eight fires, we did not cancel them en route, any at all. We called Kansas City, Kansas, three times for EMS incidences, twice for traffic incidences and once for a fire. Our staffing model is what drives us to where we have a low number of responses of requesting a mutual aid coming in. Because as soon as we hit that first ambulance call, we start monitoring and ready for the second one. We will split the engine and take another fire medic off of the engine along with the firefighter M T and send them on a second ambulance call, which triggers a recall for myself or the deputy chief to come back in and staff the engine. About eighty percent of the time, we have two paramedics on duty. One on the primary ambulance and the one that's on the backup is, could be a captain, could be a driver, maybe a firefighter, paramedic. So we are running the potential to where we have a call that requires us to run as BOS. Most times when we run a BOS nature call, we're not calling in a special service for a paramedic just because we sit there and then we need a paramedic. We can drive as fast with lights and sirens to get to higher level facility than what we could by waiting for a paramedic service to come into the city. When we sit there and talk about fire inspections, we have a hundred and thirty-seven facilities comprising over seven point three million square feet that have to be inspected. We have one credentialed SEPC Fire Marshal and who's the same one certified fire inspector too, which I'm presenting to you tonight on, fire inspections. And then we have three other fire inspector level ones within the department. We have an existing MOU, a memorant of understanding with the Kansas State Fire Marshal's Office to inspect seven facilities in the city of Edwardsville. What happens is we'll go to the inspection, we send this facility report to the Kansas State Fire Marshal's Office. Due to their staffing of not having enough inspectors, we inspect the four gas stations. We inspect K thirty or the grill thirty-two, we inspect Roscoe's, we inspect the Edwardsville Elementary School. Alright, so those seven are required to be done within the air, the annuals by the MOU with Kansas State, Kansas State Fire Marshal's Office. Out of the hundred and thirty-seven facilities last year, we had fourteen that were re-inspections for deficiencies, required somebody to go back out a second time. We had eighteen plans or remodels reviews that took place in twenty twenty-two. And then we also have an average year, three fireworks stands. In the four-day period that we used to have a fireworks stand, we will sit there and do the initial inspection on day one to approve for sales. And then we will inspect daily throughout the entire sales process. We sit there and monitor for out-of-state and illegal fireworks that can and do come across state lines and get sold sometimes inadvertently through the fireworks distributors. However, we do sit there with our policy, our procedure and our fire code requirements eliminate, just like the state of Kansas does, most aerial devices such as the burning luminary lights, bottle rockets and some of those smaller items that have the tendency to get hung up in gutters and where leaf litter and everything else is, causes fires. Our average time that we spend on inspection is over an hour at an hour and twenty-five minutes. Out of that hundred and thirty-seven, you got to consider we have almost thirty of them that are over two hundred thousand square feet or more in just the industrial complex. At this time, that wraps it up. If anybody has any questions about the twenty twenty-two activities for the fire department.
What needs are you needing for equipment, new equipment, since we're considering the sales tax?
Oh gee, I want a helicopter, I want a four hundred thousand dollar boat, I need a forty billion dollar fire station. Uh, I understand it. When I got here, which I didn't even realize, so I started putting this together, it's been eight years already. Eight years, that's almost a decade. I'm a little bit lighter than a hair, a little bit grayer in time. However, uh, we do have to look at, we will be replacing other ambulants, they'll be coming in front of the council. That is now a two-year build-out process. In another two years, we will be approaching the council for a replacement of an engine. Um, but also consider that that engine now that we bought in two thousand and fifteen has got almost forty thousand miles on it because we have that increase in call volume. So as we are sitting there looking at that, we sit there and try to come up with a comparison of the number of engine hours, the number of miles, along with what our average maintenance costs are. So right now, projected wise, over the next five to seven years, besides the small vehicles being command vehicles and a replacement pickup truck, we're only talking about one heavy piece being a new replacement pumper and the ambulance, unless if we have to expand services and, and build another station.
I think the reason I ask that is to kind of educate the general public on the importance of the sales tax that we want to do. I think the more we can get that out to the public and if it's in a meeting like this, maybe.
The sales tax has floated the fire department for eight years. And at times over a quarter of a million dollars has been offset from the budget cycle for the fire department. Uh, I remember in late two thousand and fourteen, the Royals' first run for the World Series in thirty-five years, uh, a city manager from Edwardsville called me. I said, Tim, why don't you come out here and let's do an interview? I came out and interviewed and in the process, we had a couple more phone conversations at one point in time, he was like, I got no work in fire trucks. He's like, I just wanted to let you know, and when I got here in early or late December and come in, uh, it was unique because we had a two thousand and five pumper, a twenty-three-year-old brush truck. And we had just lost the last eighty-nine pumper and they had to make the emergency purchase on a two thousand and fifteen Pierce. So, uh, again, everything that Zach had on a special sales tax, council member a lot, um, was pretty well accurately covered of the heavies, uh, with the equipment. Also remember we use that special sales taxes, our matching fund for the regional SCBA grant that covered about two hundred thousand dollars with the breathing apparatus for ourselves. We use a lot of it to cover the ninety thousand dollars worth of cardiac monitors, the three new cardiac monitors we bought three years ago. Uh, the new ambulance, so the only thing that is still left on special sales tax this year is the quint and the new ambulance. Um, the extractor for the cancer prevention and a lot of that other stuff has already been paid off. The pumper was paid off in six years. The multipurpose brush truck or the multipurpose attack vehicle, commonly known as the brush truck, was a paid off in five years. Um, and then like I said, in two thousand and eighteen, we approached because we had to replace the other pumper and we had the needs for a quit because of our average roof line was taller than our biggest ground ladder. And that covered that in two thousand and eighteen and that's the one that will carry out until twenty twenty-six. I believe that was an eight-year. It, it could be either a seven, eight or ten-year financing option, we'll have to go back and double check on it, but that's where we're at with that.
I, I would say that the area where, uh, Chief Wyndham and I probably spend the most time is really around staffing and I, and I know we hear staffing a lot. What, what, what's unique in, in, in especially the fire services and EMS is that paramedic, right? And, and it is a very competitive field and there's a very low volume of people in there. So one of the things that, that we talked about and the chief has put into play, Kansas is, I, I, is not friendly for paramedic training. It, it's, it's around the, the, uh, junior colleges and degree programs. But you have people that can get certified as a paramedic that don't necessarily have a degree in medicine. But we have a working relationship, is it lap county or what's the?
Central Jackson County is where we're sitting, our paramedics' institute.
So, so we've been sending, you know, uh, uh, people we have that are M Ts and start putting them in that, that program and somewhat building our own in-house people. But that will, I think, continue to be a challenge. And we're looking at, you know, I, I think we've talked many times about being able to add, you know, add to the staff one per shift because our, our challenge is, as, as you've kind of heard the chief say, if somebody's gone, they're sick, they're on vacation, they're in training, they're whatever. We, I, it, the only way to fill that spot is the use of overtime or where we can, we'll use part-time. But part-time people, I mean, we have some great part-time people, but guess what? They have other jobs and now a lot of them are already working in EMS fire services. So it's not like we can call and say, uh, Mike's out today sick, we need you to come in and work this shift because they're already working somewhere. So, uh, the chief and I even as, as today are looking at, you know, what are things we can try to do to help that staffing, understanding that long-term or not even long-term, in the near future, uh, we need to really staff that up. And it's very similar to what happens in the police department. I mean, you got, you just have people that have to go to training and their vacation and their sick time and all the same, but we effectively run in the fire department at minimal staffing. So we don't have a sixth and say, okay, we go down to five, we're good. And if we go down to four and the first ambulance goes out, you're out of service for all intents and purposes. Because if I throw those two people on an ambulance, I, I have no fire truck, no support, right? And so that, that's probably my biggest, I mean, we've been very fortunate utilizing what we've done with the sales tax to rebuild the fleet. And now we can use it to, to keep the fleet healthy, right? So we don't have to wait twenty years and let everything go bad and then try to build it back up. We, we've got a system and we've got it laid out and we can continue to fund it. But I think staffing will be the, the biggest single challenge in the fire service. And I, I know staffing broadly is a big challenge, but this is one where you know, it's a little more difficult and it's, again, a lot of it is around para- paramedicine, paramedics, right? They're, they're in high demand, they can go to work at the hospital, they go to doctors offices, they go, you know, they just have a lot of opportunity uh, to go to other services. So I, I think Chief Wyndham's done a great job over his last eight years here. We, we've had our ups and downs, but, uh, I think we're in sound footing and, and we'll just keep, keep developing it, right? I think as you see, we're, we're able to keep a lot more records. So in the past, we didn't have a lot of record, you know, our record keeping was more by hand, by, you know, other ways. But the council has been, you know, very giving and allowing us to use technology to try to keep records and, and we could build it up. I mean, police department's had a great record system for years. So you can see multiple years, fire department, we're a little farther behind, but I think we're, we now are getting that kind of stuff, which allows the chief to make good management decisions. Without the, without the records and the data, it's hard to make those decisions.
Yeah, that's, that's one thing I was going to comment is just, I was, I'm very impressed with the numbers actually and, and all the data. You know, I, I mean, there's just no doubt to me that, you know, that Chief Wyndham, you've done a great job. And I know Michael, you're on board supporting, uh, uh, both of our chiefs in their areas and, but I, I just, I, I, I know that I can speak for a lot of people as, as a citizen, I'm very proud of, of what we have in our small little community. And the numbers speak for themselves and, and I was, I was fairly impressed with the, the overlap time as well. I mean, I, I'm, I'm always concerned about the, the train issue and the delay. Uh, but the response time, uh, you guys figured out, I mean, you just, you have a plan in place for that. I mean, that, that's a, that's, that's, that's awesome.
Yes, but as it to kind of allude to what Mr. Webb is showing that we didn't put in there is the two hundred plus extra hours of me coming back in, not fire-related, just to cover because we're in that overlap. Or the times that I've covered a shift or the deputy chief has covered a shift to try to help offset the overtime. Our minimum staffing is five and our maximum number of people every day is five. And if we take away any one, now all of a sudden we're the, the, I hate to say it, but we're, we're almost like Bonner Springs, having to call somebody else a hundred times into our community, which I have a hard time with because I live here, I pay my taxes here. And by God, I'm going to be the first one to treat my neighbors if need be before I have somebody else come in here. Um, that unfortunately may be just part of the Kentucky roots or the Kentucky blue grassroots to it or Appalachia, however you want to call it. Um, but at the end of the day, that is going to be something that as the council is, is already looking at with facilities, as Mr. Mayor K Har has already seen, uh, with what we have, we have three young ladies that work over there career-wise, um, that we have two bathrooms. No general bulk areas, you know, it's, uh, closed quarters, tightness on space, we've been outside in a trailer for six years now. Um, you know, it's, it's, the, the problem is, is going to be the next two or three years, we have another two hundred call increase. We are now looking at that, we're talking about minimum staffing needs to be somewhere around seven or eight to just facilitate the, the ambulance transports.
Chief, chief, can you go back, I'm sorry, can you go back to one or a couple of screens where it shows the call-offs?
The overlapping calls or?
They have the numbers of the amount of call-offs or, or canceled, I think it is.
Yeah, the twenty-six.
There you go, canceled en route. Is there, I know you're looked at this, but that seems like, you know, the, the twenty-six canceled en route. Uh, is there anything that we can do, you can do on, on, on these to reduce that down to, you know, I don't know what an acceptable number is, but it seems like you're called out and then you're canceled en route. You're, you're, you know what I mean, you're not where you're supposed to be and you're not ready to go or maybe you are en route. I mean, is it, how does that, is this a, is it a, just tell me about that a little bit.
So I wouldn't call it classified as a problem, um, to a degree. Now, if that was a hundred and twenty-six times, I, I guarantee you I'd be over there at somebody else's house arguing and be ready to throw fist cuffs. However, when we look at it, I, myself and Mr. Webb has already had the meeting with the new chief of Bonner Springs Fire Department, um, who I've known when he worked at Olathe Fire Department for many years, um, as well as the city manager. We have more meetings coming up. He is aware of some of the concerns that we have with this. Part of what drives the canceled en route is the call acuity is given by dispatch. If somebody calls in and says, my grandma just fell over, until they get further supplemental information, here you go. A lot of these times we've been canceled en route is when Bonner Springs got a two or three-person fire truck potentially there or a police officer there and realized that the call was not as critical as what it was. And they're like, our ambulance is coming now back from the hospital, they can deal with it and we don't have to sit there and deal with it. So what we're trying to do is narrow it down to traffic accidents. We don't know until we get there because all of a sudden everybody can sit there and play smash cars and they're either falling out of the vehicle and they're really hurt. Or I've watched them get out until the first police officer shows up and then the next thing you know is they're the walking wounded, they look like the walking dead because I've got my neck jacked up, my back is broken, this and that and everything else. Um, fires, again, you know, we have an, an automatic aid agreement with them for any type of structured fire. Um, that gives them their backup to come into us as well. Uh, that was originally driven kind of by Bonner Springs when they were still a hundred percent volunteer. Um, because we were the closest, uh, fire department next to them, um, compared to KCK. Uh, that has been a great, great benefit to us. Our citizens have, have benefited from that numerous times. Um, more so as you can see on the times that we have responses coming in, uh, we rely, rely heavily upon that response there. And then like I said, the EMS, some of it's just the acuity of they've got same two or three calls running. Um, I am aware that, uh, uh, they are going to try to look at some of their staffing concerns to address that for twenty twenty-four. But we, we had that conversation last week, um, with the, uh, new chief and the experience of working, we had with while on task force together. Um, he was glad when we sat there and remembered it was me and, uh, And like, so we've already got commitments to meet and to address some of this on both sides, as well as our commitments to both communities to try to streamline our operations more to benefit both communities and not just one or the other.
On inspections, can we go back to that slide? How many man-hours total do you, I mean, that you've used, you know, inspecting buildings and everything else? You say the average is an hour and a quarter, but some of them are 200,000 square feet, so that's quite a bit.
FedEx is eight hours.
Yeah.
Office Max is four and a half. Alfred Broder is three hours and 45 minutes. It's the quickest I've been through there. There's no, the other two inspectors we got in there have just occurred in the last year. So I probably spent close to 600 hours. I don't have an exact number, I can sit there and tell you, I can't look exactly in a crystal ball at the number of man-hours that I've spent inspecting. But it is probably, if I had to go back and say, well, over 600 hours, probably close and close to 1,000. That's how I know what it takes me to get through FedEx. The old Old Dominion was a three-and-a-half-hour project, but the new occupant in there, it's going to be the same three-and-a-half hours because you're talking about that's 600,000 square feet. Alfred Broder, at the end of the day, is doing 800,000 square foot warehouse, the same with Office Max. FedEx is adding on again with more plants or more fuel loading areas and everything else. You have new facilities going in down in the new Tiff district down there. So as we have more add-ons and more proposed businesses, that requires more inspections and more time inspecting. We can, every day that we wake up, we don't have a fire, we're saving about $87 million worth of property in the city of Edwardsville.
How much time is taken off of one of our personnel off the rig to do inspections? And then somebody has to come and fill in for them?
No, sir. No, sir. We have just hired, again, another part-time person that does a lot of the inspections. So he gets the lower-level inspections, the home daycares, the liquor stores and all that. Because what we were having in 2016, 2017, 2018 was company-driven inspections that were having to go back two or three times because emergency calls were picking up. So now we have an assigned inspector, myself depending upon the level of the requirements, or Mr. Stafford, who's a retired Cary, North Carolina firefighter, that moved back here with his wife eight, nine years ago, completed his inspection program. Chief, I'll take some of this off of you. So, you know, we're breaking it down so that the company's going to accompany Mr. Stafford or myself, but they're still in service. So if they leave, we continue on with the inspection. So we're not tying up more time and having to go back and we're not occurring overtime, bringing somebody back in the backfield for it.
Chief, there's a slide missing from your presentation, which is the slide of the amount of time that you and your staff love on the city that's not a fire or an EMS call. And I would like for both chiefs to do that in the future, is you spend a lot of your energy and time just loving on the city with the Christmas program and some of the Fire Academy that you did. I think those are, obviously you're not out saving lives at that point in time. Maybe, you may be saving lives at that point in time. But I'd really like to see that community service loving on the city included here because it would be a more accurate description of what you do entirely for the city. So I greatly appreciate what you and your staff do for the city and the amount of work you put in. And I know that you're not the only one doing it, but you.
I would say the police department's usually right there, side by side with this whole time. Somehow, somehow I kind of twist their arms. It's the only time I ever twist a cop's arm and sit there and say, let's do this. But every time that I've approached Sergeant Brooks, who does part of it, and Chief Mathies, it's always been whatever you're doing, we're going to match you.
And I would like both of you in the future to have that slide included because it is of great value to the citizens of Edwardsville.
I know Ms. Schreiber had a question.
Yes, I will add and say I totally agree with that because personally, my family, we had to call 911 in 2019. And both fire and police department, they're phenomenal. It was bad, but every one of the officers and first responders, top-notch. You hate to have to use that, but we have the best. I am going to ask a few questions. So how many firemen, paramedics, EMT, just the fire?
We have 15 authorized full-time personnel.
We're both fire department EMS.
They're all one. So 15 full-time employees are a blend of firefighter, paramedics and EMTs. We have six that are certified as paramedics and the other nine are EMTs, which will be over time dropping off to where our goal is in the next hiring cycle. By the time that I get ready to potentially retire, will be 15 paramedics on, filling the various roles. So we always have paramedics at least three calls deep.
Didn't we approve some positions?
We approved us to go get a safer grant that was not awarded.
Yeah, oh, okay.
And then we also brought it to the council again for approval this year to reapply for the safer grant.
That's why I was sitting here, I thought we approved that.
Yeah. We were unsuccessful last year, so we applied again. And remember, the safer grant only provided us one more full-time per shift. We are at 10 or 11, 12 part-timers right now, with five of those being paramedics. Some of them have been our former employees that have moved on to other departments that have stayed on with us to work part-time. A couple are paramedic supervisors with Leavenworth County EMS. And the rest are some firefighter EMTs. We have a batch of about 15 new applicants for firefighter EMT part-time positions that'll probably be coming onboard in the next month or two. Those, most of them, I get to do the field interviews when they're students over at Johnson County Community College. So I get to kind of pick and choose which ones I want to come over here and which ones aren't going to work. We just sit back and walk away.
This gets, I was going to say, it gets a little bit back to the challenge of facilities to people, right?
Right.
It would be great to say, hey, we're going to have, you know, five full-time and two part-time on. A lot of times the part-time people, when are they available? They're available nights, weekends, right? And so, but where do I put them?
Right, right.
I mean, I'm just, I'm just kind of reiterating. Sometimes our challenge is, okay, well, we could get these, but where do we, where do we take them? Where do we put them? How do we?
And people like us don't, I don't know these, I have no idea.
Yeah, those are, those are just, I'm just saying, the challenges of every day of facilities to people.
How many full-time employees does the Bonner Springs Fire Department have?
Seven, eight, with the new chief.
So my question is, several people I've talked to, this has been for a couple of years, and you know where I'm going with this. People see our trucks go down the street, they see them go out of town. That's our fuel, our vehicles we purchase. And Chief Mathies made a great comment a couple of years ago about us borrowing the police dog from Bonner. When you have to borrow something a few times, you need to get your own. I don't know, I understand mutual aid, but it's pretty lopsided.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't mean that mean as far as the city, I know we need to, but.
I cannot disclose some conversations that have already been taking place. I do know that some of that is going to be addressed in the 2024 budget cycle for that city, that we are hoping to see that reduction in mutual aid. It will not eliminate it by any means, but I'm hoping that it will bring it more even-kill of 50/50 with that. But Bonner Springs is in the same boat as you council members and mayor are of, how do we manage needing more while dealing with limited amount of income that's coming in? And at the same point in time, the stress and burden on taxpayers complaining to you guys to lower our taxes because they're out of control. And that has to be a happy medium that that council, just like ours, has agreed to endorse and embrace the fire department and say, hey, this is what we're going to sit there and provide for. It's going to be one of those challenges that I think Mr. Richards is going to be working over for the next several months in the budget process. I don't want to speak prematurely to what has been discussed in that until it officially occurs. But I just do know that that is being addressed to solve that problem on their end.
Well, it's, and it's people I talk with in the community, our police departments don't do it, really.
Emergency call.
Correct. But it just seems Bonner Springs is twice the size, twice the amount of people. Half the staff, that.
I do think, as the, as the chief said, I mean, you know, the new chief came on, we've already met with them, you know? I think there's been a long, I mean, there's been a long tradition in Bonner Springs around their volunteer fire department.
Right.
And the pride in their volunteer fire department. They've always had good equipment because they've used resources like sales tax and things. And I think a little bit of it is, you know, it's hard to let go of that to some respect. But I think, I think that the, from the management, from the council, I think they understand the challenge. But just staff, I mean, just trying to staff it up. I mean, if you just said tomorrow, we're going to put 15 people on, just getting those people hired, having recruits, having people that can serve, right? And their system was more focused, I mean, their system was really built around a paid staff EMS and a volunteer fire department. We've always been really around that paid full-service, right? Doing fire, even when we didn't do transport, we were still first response and medical, right? And so we focused around that. So I think part of it's just the history of those, I'm not trying to make excuses, just they've come about in different ways. And maybe they, you know, they're, I do truly believe that they recognize the issue and are trying to put resources to fill that gap. Just from my, from my discussion, now, my discussions are city manager level, right?
I'd asked the question last year.
It's early, I mean, you know, I mean, they've been on a week or so and I reached out and said, hey, we would love to sit down and talk and just, you know, make those acquaintances, talk about some of these issues, which we did. And I think there was very open dialogue to that.
I know Mr. Webb, in the past, for the past two years, has directly approached that with their city manager more than one occasion, hey, where is this going to solve that? So it comes into that $1.2 million price range when you're talking about budgeting and planning and adding that on to a tax roll that you didn't have with everything else, so.
Right, not to mention if one of our firefighters gets hurt out there.
Right, absolutely.
On us. All right, thank you, and thank you for everything you do.
Are we transporting people from Bonner to the hospital?
When we transport people from Bonner to the hospital, we are billing people from Bonner for that hospital trip and we are recovering the money for that trip. Yes, ma'am. We sit there and, in fact, the majority of our tax write-off recovery has been this year from Bonner Springs residents. So we, like I said, it doesn't matter. We do not provide a free ambulance service to anybody in the city. And we sure don't do it with people that are traveling through the city. And when we first started running EMS calls in Bonner Springs, we did not provide free EMS service. There is this nasty connotation rumor out there because Bonner Springs doesn't bill for their service to their residents. Trust me, we bill them when we transport them. And the payout ratio with the new billing company is going to be monitored. I just know that most of the phone calls that I've received this year, people complaining because their Kansas taxes got held up because they had outstanding ambulance bills in Edwardsville or residents of another city.
Let me just add one thing, and this has been really forever, but I mean, when we brought on EMS, we had these discussions with Chief Mathies, we have a simple goal. 911 is our primary, right? 911 calls in Edwardsville is our primary focus. If it impacts that, then we're having, you know, then that's, you know, if we're impacting 911 response calls in Edwardsville, then something has to change. That's always been our focus. And I won't say there's never any, but that's our focus, right? 911 call, response, that, police, fire, EMS, that's where our focus is and will always be.
And I appreciate that. I just, I just, on a resident's perspective, when we're talking about staffing, so to speak, and we're going to Bonner three-to-one as often as they're coming to ours, I have some sympathy for governing bodies and budgets. And, you know, that's, that can be a sickler for me. But one thing that, and I appreciate that we've got a new person enrolled in a role there, the chief's position, hopefully it can make some difference. I feel like we've been the crutch for a city with a population and budget twice our size for too long. So I appreciate the chief and your working on getting that corrected for our city and our residents. Chief, thank you so much for your presentation. I feel like as much as we realize that the fire department does for this city is always eye-opening to put it in data and put it in numbers so we can see across the city, across the year, where those hours are going and we really appreciate it, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion recess and executive session pursuant to KSA 754319B6 for preliminary discussion of the acquisition of real property related to the public work facilities.
Second.
I don't think we need more than 15 minutes, but so I don't.
Let's come back at five after eight, or would be, where are, that clock isn't right, is it?
It's almost eight o'clock.
Yeah.
Eight oh five.
Okay, so eight oh five?
Yes.
That includes the city manager, council and the attorney.
We have a motion and a second, will the clerk please call roll?
Scott?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Malot?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
This conference will now be recorded.
They did a AP first, then the KBI test, and then that's how we got an answer.
Yes.
Yeah.
Moved or returned to regular session, yet no action taken.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, will the clerk slowly call roll?
Bishop calls aye. Will Adams?
Yes.
And Bishop called aye. Malot?
Aye, yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
I think it's our four anyway.
Yeah, we don't need his vote.
Councilmember Scott, did you vote for the motion was to return to regular session? Your vote is?
What?
What is your vote to return?
To return. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so. We'll slowly start. The next item is considers the election of a search firm for position of city manager. Mike was helpful enough to put some note cards out for us. At the workshop, we were able to interview three recruitment firms. And so, and then before that, y'all had the proposals for them to review as well as references and referrals from cities they've worked with previously. And so I talked to Mike about that earlier today, just as far as what, how do we now from three get to the top one for council consensus? And so the note cards are, if you would just write what order you would put those search firms in, I think will, that'll give us an idea of it right away, like it'd save us a whole lot of time if we are pretty much around the same page or if we need to have discussion. But that, just a reminder, the search firms were Gov, HR, Raff Ellis and SGR. And so if you just put those again in your ranking of first, second and third, and then the lowest score would be like the top one, the middle score would be the middle and the highest score would be the third rank. the middle score would be the middle, and the highest score would be the third rank.
Nathan.
We got plenty of extra note cards if needed.
Yes.
Screw up. Put your order. I thought you were handing it to me.
No, I thought someone needed it.
Know when to fold them, got to know when to hold them.
DNA test.
Okay, so we'll just kind of tally these up as we go. We've got Raft Ellis, Gov HR, and SGR. First one has Raft Ellis for one. Gov HR for two. SGR for three. The next one has SGR for one. Raft Ellis for two. And Gov HR for three. Next one has Raft Ellis for one. SGR for two. Gov HR for three. One abstain. The next one is Gov HR for one. SGR for two. Raft Ellis for three. And we've got SGR for one. Gov HR for two. Raft Ellis for three. Just add these up real quick and see if we have an outlier.
Raft Ellis is 11. Gov HR is 10. And SGR is nine.
Okay, that's what, I got the same thing.
Good.
What was your number again, I'm sorry, I was.
Raft Ellis was 10.
I'll have them at 11.
And Gov was 11, and SGR was nine, is that what you said?
Ten, yeah, 10, and 10.
So we got two 10s and a 9?
Yeah.
I had Gov HR 11. Okay, and so just with the tally, we have SGR as the top ranking, with Raft Ellis in second, Gov HR in third. If the, if the council's comfortable, we could, we could just make a motion with SGR as the number one, since that was the preferred, and then move on to the next item on the agenda, if.
Make a motion that we award the contract to SGR.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, will the clerk please call roll?
Scott?
Abstain.
Adams?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Moat?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
I, I, I don't remember if they had a contract or some document to sign.
I think it went on the proposal, but.
Okay, so, I mean, I assume they'll make it for your signature, but we may want the city attorney just to review, which would be our typical process, right, just to make sure that, I mean, I think it's pretty straightforward, there's not a lot of stuff in it, but I would always suggest having at least a review of, make sure it's not something that I'm going to leave the same point.
And as far as, I'm sorry, as far as the price that they said, is that going to be on the contract?
Yeah, it's in their proposal, if I, most of them will have you sign a proposal, it's not probably a contract in that more.
But we just did not look, there are a bunch of hidden stuff in there, I think they were pretty showless.
So next.
Yeah.
The next is the addition item. I guess we can say.
Yeah, no.
I don't have the verbiage on it.
I believe it would be to consider a motion to recess into executive session pursuant to KSA 754319B1 to discuss personnel matters of non-elected, or, yes, personnel matters of non-elected personnel, is my guess on the.
That sounds better than what I had.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
To discuss, well, specifically discuss the position of interim city manager.
Correct. I, I'd say 10 minutes. Now, if you want longer?
Yeah, there's no way that's happening in 10 minutes.
Let's do 15, then, and if we need to, we can go back.
To return at 8:30?
Who do you want, I mean?
City attorney.
Yeah, I don't know if, I mean, I, you want the city attorney present, I don't know if you want me present or not, I mean, I'll leave that to y'all. I mean, I have no best to per se, but if, but if you prefer just to have the city attorney in there, I'm totally fine, whatever, you tell me what you want.
City attorney.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, will the clerk please call roll?
Scott?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Moat?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Mike, you left the room off?
Yes, we did. Oh, sure.
This conference will now be recorded.
Excuse me, sir.
Oh, sorry, no.
Let's see what it call roll?
No, sir, he was holding.
It's 29. Yes.
Returned to regular session with no action.
Who? Yes, Jill, yes.
The silent.
We'll all be down there.
Do we have a second?
Okay.
Second.
Thank you, we're doing.
We have a motion in a second, will the clerk please call roll?
Scott?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Moat?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
City manager report, Mike, do you have anything?
I really don't have, I don't think anything bad tonight. Wow.
Okay.
Got something you can ask me?
Mr. Knight?
I'll have a potential executive session request coming next time as a blow up, last council meeting discussion. We should have some draft or product that will be sent to you under attorney-client privilege, obviously one-way communication just for your consideration, but it won't be included in the packet without a sense of public record.
Thank you. Zach, do you have anything in court?
Go ahead.
Chief Mathies?
I don't think so, thank you.
Chief put him. Hilton and Adams?
Every year, when we get, when we get to the audit, it just keeps getting better and better. And, and I, I recognize that it's, it's leadership from Mike, setting the standards and, and, and holding people accountable, and Zach, and, and the department heads. 16 years of watching these budgets has been, it's a thrill. The last couple of years have been a lot of fun seeing the numbers, when, when we've seen some other challenges. So I, I know everybody sacrifices, and for us to, just about year over year over year, come in under budget, it, it means we've, we've, we've had a wise budget, and we've had good management. And so I really want to recognize all of you, and your staff. I know you, you preach it to the staff, and I, I want to thank the staff for feeling their part of it as well. And I know there's a lot of sacrifice in any, any staff position, especially in government in Edwardsville. A lot of, a lot of our employees go above and beyond, and it's greatly appreciated as a council member over the years. I greatly appreciate their sacrifice and, and their passion for the city. So I just want to thank you all for such a, for every year getting better and better and better at what you do.
Thank you.
Councilman Scott?
Is it me? Just, I'll be brief, I just, again, want to thank both, both of our chiefs for their participating in the Edwardsville Elementary Career Day. It's pretty awesome to get our equipment out there and get our, get our staff with the kids, and just forward-thinking and educating, educating them there as well. And I just want to applaud the efforts of the council again, and, and working together, and, and trying to find common ground in, in these items that we discuss, and I definitely appreciate the support and, and again, just open candor that we have, it's, it's very, very helpful all the way across. I believe we have a, what, do we have something coming up? What is it? Yeah, cleanup day, want to mention that. And Zach, you buying pizza? All right. Sounds like a, it sounds like a date, we'll be there, thank you, guys.
Yes, oh, Chief Mathies, I want to just give kudos out to one of your officers, he was, I think it was corporal, what, what's his corporal? Oh, there's her, we'll just start firing them off, I'll remember.
Uh, let's see, Robinson?
Robinson, uh, here.
Marshall?
Marshall, no, it wasn't Marshall, but, but it was, anyway, doesn't matter. Whoever was on duty that day, I got a, finally got ahold of them, and they took care of a little matter for me, and I really appreciate it. So, I mean, they were, I mean, called me right back.
Thank them all.
Buying pizza on the 20th.
The people they helped out were wanted to thank you for your, for your stuff. Okay, I think it was corporal. Never mind, that's it.
Margaret?
Want to add on to what's been said about the chiefs, and thank you again for everything you do. I was going to say, point out that the career day at the elementary school, talked to a couple of parents that have kids up there, you know how much that means to those kids? It, I, I mean, it means the world to them, just the hands-on experience, that a fireman, a policeman is just, it's, it's, it's so worth it. I know it's a lot to do and go set up, but it's very much appreciated, things like that. Like Councilmember Adams had said, create that last slide about all those other things, everything else besides work that you do, so. Those things, thank you very much. And May 20th, I will, I think longstanding tradition, I will have donuts there for all the help of the volunteers. I don't know, Zach, you should let, let me know how many will be there. Not going to rain, is it, Mike, are you going to be here this year?
I'm going to be here.
Are you?
But I don't know how much, I don't know how much I'll be able to toss, but.
Okay, well, you missed out last year, I don't know why, but you were out of town, weren't you?
I may have been.
Said he was.
I know.
May, I don't, I'm normally not, that's not when I go to, you know, what I may have been, I may have been up in Minnesota, I think. And I know it's not typically when I go to Guatemalan, so.
So if the attorney comes on May 20th, do we have to pay?
Oh.
It's a complete volunteer.
I have five birthdays and another day, I cannot pay you in May.
Yeah. Well, well.
The invitations are, come for some free food, bring them.
Free donuts.
No, but that's all we have, right?
Yeah, I'll get.
Thank you.
Of course I do. 265 feet of fence is keeping the train whistle blowing.
Yes, sir.
Do you care to explain that to the rest of the council, so they?
Well, the best explanation, so, so when the, when the quiet zone was put together, there were a set of plans that were prepared by Olson and Associates, they were the engineers. Those plans had to get approval of the UPE, probably the federal railroad, whoever, whoever at that level approved them. And on those plans was 265 feet of fencing from basically the Fourth Street Crossing back to the west to deter people from walking out, basically out of the Mobile Hall Park, where we get a lot of illegal crossing. There may be some other minor things, but that's the most.
Is that on the county, or is that on the construction company, is the county following up on that?
Well, I, the county is following it up, I've had a number of discussions with them, as well as our commissioner. I'm not, so I'm not sure if it was something where the county failed to have it in plans that were submitted, or, or whether the, the contractor missed the fencing, but, but fundamentally, apparently that has to be in place before they can move it to the, to the step of sending it all to the UPE and say it's all done.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate that you do stay on that, I did talk to Commissioner Stites the other day, and that's what he informed you and me, both at the same time, that that's what, and I hate to keep bringing that up, people.
Well, no, it's not done.
If you lived there and had to hear that, you know exactly what I'm talking about. I have a decimal, decimal meter on my phone down, those trains are going 80 decibels 500 yards away from the crossing. So if I'm at the crossing, they got to be breaking out, or, so, and that's why I go huh a lot. So anyway, thank you for that. One other thing. Go ahead and laugh. You won't be, you, you, the other thing is, the, who owns the road when you exit the ATM machine from the railroad tracks to 32 Highway, does that belong to Bank Midwest, or is that Edwardsville? I believe it's a public street, at least up until Park, and then there's an alley. It needs attention badly. I was kind of hoping CE would be here tonight, but there's a groove down the middle of it, and it's starting to become really unmanageable. So I, I would like to see something done on that.
I guess, oh, we can get together to make sure I'm in the right spot. Because part of it is, I believe, public street, part of it is a access easement or something of that.
Dusty filled a big hole on it, and then he dug a ditch behind the gas station, he dug a ditch, which was probably on private property, but it would come back and it's bad, bad again, so, thank you for that, and that's all I've got, thank you.
Thank you to everyone, Zach, I know, had a big part of it, and I'm sure some other folks. In coordinating the citywide garage sale last weekend, I saw a lot of people out and about, I think we had more garage sales than ever. And so I feel like that was a really successful event. We already mentioned the citywide cleanup coming up on May 20th. I just also wanted to mention, we've got two days left to sign up for the Edwardsville mobile pantry. That is this coming Saturday, and so we have through Wednesday to sign up. If you guys know any families that need that, live in the area, that can make it here to pick up groceries, please let them know, pass along the registration information. We'd love to feed them, have a great night. We'd love to feed them. Have a great night.